Okay. So Phil has nominated me and Livy again. And I'm okay with that. And I'll try to be here as much as possible. Livy, I'm not traveling this year, so we're good.
Yeah, it's my job, Livy.
Might not be that hard to refrain from traveling, huh?
No. Okay, so shall we do it by acclamation? Can we do that?
Sure, I move with the, that by acclamation that we accept the two candidates.
I vote yes.
Linda says yes.
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 Jamie says yes, Phil says yes, Livy says...
We, yes.
Am I saying sure? Alright, so that's the amendations, so I guess I'll keep doing this. We have two items under open forum. Some recognition, so I'm gonna turn that over to you, Director Sutton.
Yes ma'am, we have a 10-year recognition, which would be Perry Stevenson. And I told him he didn't have to be here this evening. When we are able to get together in person again, we will recognize him officially then. But he did reach his 10 years on, Mandy, do you remember the date?
April 28th, I think.
Okay. Perry's been here, obviously, for 10 years. He started out as a maintenance worker two, I believe. And moved up to a maintenance worker three. And then when Dustin Nelson left, he was promoted to the position of facility supervisor. So he's been with us for a while and moved up through the ranks. So we needed to recognize him. He receives, I believe, a $500 check, $300 check, and a week of vacation.
Nice. And is he well? Is, he's the one that was sick, right?
No.
No? Okay.
That was Marvin.
Okay.
Rodman.
And he's not sure when he's gonna take that week of vacation. As you know, he's been kinda by himself for a while. We've just recently got some staff hired to help him. So hopefully that'll give him some time to take off and take some vacation. But congratulations Perry, he's been through a lot.
And we thank him for sticking with us.
Yeah. And then there's that Mandy Thomas. She's been here for 20 years. On May...
Fifteenth.
Huh?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, May 15th, a week after her birthday.
Exactly today. It's the 7th, 8th, it went, yeah.
Today's 20th, but, yeah, regardless. So Mandy came in and she started as an administrative assistant, was that your title, Mandy?
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, when she came in and she, she worked her way up to her current position of Assistant Executive Director. When I left that position and moved into Executive Director. But she has become pretty fluent in all of the programs. The Housing Authority has served interim for, when we had Section 8 vacancy. And when we had a public housing manager vacancy. And then she stepped in in my absence. So she's been, and then she does all of the accounting as well. So she's kinda been around the block as well. So good for Mandy.
Yay, Mandy.
What a year.
Mandy gets a week of pay.
And a week of vacation.
And a week of vacation? That was what you chose?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
I thought it was just a week of pay, geez, now she's gonna leave me for a week too.
Okay, Kennedy's joined us, and I will fill you in that we had elections. That we amended the agenda to include elections, because it is essentially our annual meeting. And Livy and I were re-elected. And I personally wanna thank Mandy. I know that when Joanne was going through a hard time, Mandy took over and we could depend on her. And we really appreciate you going through all of the technical changes. And all of the good times and hard times, especially the hard times the last several years. With all of this, with the building and everything else. So my personal thanks to Mandy for 20 years of hard service.
I think it speaks well for an organization that has long-term employees. I think that says a lot about the structure and the management of the organization. So I thank both of you.
True. Okay, so that brings us to item three. I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda. A, the approval of the April 15, 2020 regular meeting minutes. B, approval of the Executive Director's report. And C, approval of the financial reports.
I need a second?
Second.
Second.
Fight over it, one of them, Livy or Jamie, is the second? I know you're all being so good and keeping muted, but it makes it hard to jump in. Are there any questions about anything in the minutes? Or the financial reports? That we are looking at? And Madam Director, do you have anything to add to your Director's report?
I really don't. The main thing I was gonna talk about was kinda the update as far as where we are with the COVID-19. But I think that's later on in the agenda, so I'll save it for there. But I will mention that Marvin has returned to work, Marvin Rodman has returned to work. We're very glad to have him back. And then we did, we're able to hire a maintenance worker one. Mark Brown, he's a fairly new employee, he started on May the 12th. So I'm so glad that we've got some help in, and they seem to be doing very well. And Perry's got some help out there in the field, so maybe he can get some on-call days off.
Alright, do we wanna include discussion of the goals form as part of the Director's report? Which Joanne sent us this afternoon? Anybody have time to look at that, or do you wanna do that later?
Yeah, that was kind of a follow-up from last month's meeting. I really didn't have anything to add to that.
Does it, did y'all get a chance to look at those, those notes on the goals report?
I will, I will tell you, since we're on the subject, but I will tell you that, you know, we haven't gotten the final recovery agreement from HUD yet. I imagine they're rather backed up with everything going on also. But we are sending our financial reports to them on monthly. And they are doing a financial analysis monthly on our financial reports. And as of March 31st, our financial score had increased to 19.5 out of 25.
Oh, good.
So that was a, that was a good thing. Now, you know, we're only in May, and who knows what's gonna happen the rest of the year. And we do still have our debt service, the Johnson Controls, this year. So, you know, it's gonna fluctuate up and down, but we're moving in the right direction. The numbers are all going in the right direction.
Okay.
So we're very happy about that.
And did we get any, I guess we're gonna talk about the COVID, the monies from the government? Did we get any for that?
We did, we got about 71,000 in extra capital fund monies.
Okay.
And in operating fund, Mandy, how much was it?
For operating?
Uh huh.
71.
Oh, operating was 71, capital fund was... Capital fund, I don't think we know yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I wonder, because I know that that stuff's moving really slowly.
Yeah. And we got an extra 21,000 in Section 8, in administrative fees. But here's the thing about that money, is that we have to track it very, very, very carefully.
Yeah.
It can only be spent for COVID-related things. So the funds that we spent, making sure everybody had everything they needed to work remotely, we can use that money for that. And any supplies that we're buying, we can use that money for that. So, I mean, it's very limited what we can use that money for. We don't get to just draw it down and throw it in our bank account and say, "Thank you HUD." We, and it's unclear right now, even to the field office. If, when all of this is settled down, if we'll have to return those funds, or they will just turn it into regular operating subsidy, we don't know that yet. So they're telling us to track it very carefully. And make sure you have invoices and receipts for everything that you charge to that.
And we can trust that Mandy's taking care of that.
Yes ma'am.
If somebody loses their job because of the shutdown and can't pay their rent, is that connected to COVID, so you could use the money for that rental? No, I don't think so, okay.
Not, not as of right now. There has been some discussion on one of the listservs that I belong to about whether or not HUD will allow it. But it has been brought up to HUD, and so, we'll see.
Yeah, because we've had additional, additional costs that we've had to pay toward the rent, because people lost their jobs. So those are additional expenses that we had that are directly related, sort of.
How much have you lost? You know, the President said that people, if it's due to the coronavirus, if they can't pay their rent, they've lost their job or whatever. They, they don't have to make the rent payment for, until, I don't know when, three months delay? Or is that, isn't that for public housing only, the HUD part?
No, it actually applies also to Section 8.
Yeah, okay. So are you kinda keeping a tally of how much you're missed, you're having to do without?
We are. Ours is not tremendous, there is some loss, I'm looking it up right now.
There were two numbers I saw somewhere.
Yeah.
Said that people applied for changes due to their loss of their job.
In the public housing program, $4,150 a month is how much our rental income has decreased. Let me look in the Section 8.
I was just curious, I...
Well, she's, well, she's...
I know, she's looking, I just figured it would really rack up fast. But that $4,000 isn't so bad of the public housing.
Yeah.
And in Section 8, it's $5,134 a month that our half payments have increased.
Yeah, so that, and those people had to file forms to change their status, right? And they had to, and they, they reported that they lost their jobs due to COVID. And so we have to pay that much more of the rent. And so that's over $10,000 right there. That's, that's our budget has, essentially, income that we've lost.
So we're having...
Three different programs, yeah.
That we have to cover.
Lost income, okay.
So if they let you use that money, then that'll eat that 21,000 up pretty fast.
And, well, only the 5,134 could be applied to the 21,000. But it couldn't even be applied to the 21,000, because that's for administrative expenses, not for housing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, are there any other questions about anything that Joanne provided us in that section? In the consent agenda, or Mandy? Then I call the question.
Linda?
Yes.
Livy?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes, me?
Uh huh.
Yes? Woo!
Bill?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any commissioners' comments today? So that brings us to old business. And the COVID update.
Yes, well, I really don't have too much order to report. I kinda thought when, we might have more to report. But since the Governor went from Phase 1 to 1.5. And they're still very much encouraging remote work. So we still have, we're kinda still exactly where we were at the beginning of this. You know, staff are working remotely for the most part. Most everybody's coming in at least a couple of days a week. Just because there's some things that just have to be done in the office. But we have pretty much transitioned to doing recertifications and those kinda things via mail or email or remotely in some way. We're really anxious for some of our new software to come into play. So, because I, I don't think this is gonna be kinda the way we move in the future. So we, not so that we don't have any contact with our participants, but I think there will be less participant contact required. And a lot of things can be done remotely. And let me tell you, our, Kat told me today that she's received a lot of positive feedback from her Section 8 clients, they're really enjoying this, not having to come in the office and being able to do things electronically. So I think, you know, it could be, that's, that's, I guess, a discussion for another day. But until work, remote work is discouraged or not, no longer encouraged, I think we'll kinda be doing business status quo until probably somewhere around June 1st, unless things take a turn. It's kind of a, a day-by-day, and watch what the Governor says, and watch what the county says. And we are still, you know, processing applications and doing lease-ups and all those kinda things. And people have adapted very well, both staff, participants, applicants. Everybody seems to have adapted pretty well, much, much better than I had expected. So I'm very pleased about that. But I expect that if things keep going in the right direction, we'll probably be opening our doors, at least some, to the public by June 1st.
And then, of course, the new website will also...
It won't be up and running until September.
But it's gonna have some of those things as part of that website change too, right?
Yes, it's gonna have the ability to submit work orders. It's gonna have the ability to pay the rent online. So it's gonna have a lot of functionality on it, it's gonna be convenient, I think, for everybody.
Okay, okay. Alright.
We still have to purchase that software.
Anybody have any questions for Joanne?
The, it used to be the people had to make a paper application, now they're able to do it online, right?
They will be able to when we get our new website set up. Right now, they still have to submit a paper application, they can get the application online.
Right.
But they have to print it off, fill it out, and turn it back in to us.
So can they still get one from you?
Yes.
So printing now, if they don't have a lot of money, the library hasn't been open for probably eight weeks now.
Yeah.
So I just was, you know, I wanna be sure that maybe some of those applications are in locations where people can get them readily, okay.
Yeah, they're on the website, if they call us and say, you know, "I can't print one off, can you mail one to me?" We will mail them to them. We also have them in boxes outside of our front office door.
Okay, good.
And so they can walk right up to the office and pick up an application.
That's better yet, thank you. Especially during this, I mean, I, I've been an advocate of moving to online applications, but this is, this is a setback in that process. So we have to limp along, I think, thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Special questions? Joanne hasn't answered. So we suspect that we will be able to have our board meeting next month at the Towers.
I think that's probably the way we, we should plan, to have it at the Towers in person. And if something changes, then we can communicate that.
Okay. I, I think we will probably want to consider that we still be wearing masks at that time, if we meet together. But I, I like the idea that we are streaming this meeting on Facebook. And I think that maybe we should continue to do that in the future. Is that a possibility, if we meet at the building?
Mandy? Yeah, we could do it on Facebook Live, couldn't we?
I, I just think any, anything that we can do that will potentially catch the eye of people who don't know about us. They get to hear, you know, see it on Facebook, if they don't watch it on TV, or they don't know other things. That, that that's a good thing.
Yeah.
So I, I think it might be something we consider to continue doing, even when it's not necessary for reasons of like this. Okay? Alright.
Take advantage of any opportunity for visibility.
Yeah.
Uh huh. Joanne, are you still serving on that committee where you deal with individuals and try to come up with a solution for their particular problems?
On the community care team?
That's it, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, good. And that's good for you, as you interact with these other agencies, to be part of the solution for some of these... Really, by the time it gets to that group, it's really a hard luck case, I think.
It is.
Yeah. I don't know what I'm talking about, I'm using my imagination, so thank you.
Okay, if we don't have any questions about that, we need to go on to new business. And I will take a motion to...
I think we have to...
I don't think we have to approve her report on COVID.
Okay.
But we can do a motion to accept this Section 8 resolution?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Resolution Number 52020-A, adopting the COVID-19 statutory and regulatory waivers for the public housing in Section 8 Housing Choice voucher programs.
You second on that?
Yes, I can...
Okay. And now, and now, and now that we have a motion, we can have discussion. Does, Joanne, you wanna fill us in a little bit extra on here?
Sure. I'm sure all of you read this notice that I sent out, word for word, and have it all memorized now.
All of it.
Oh yeah, every word.
The 63-page notice that we got. HUD issued this notice in response to COVID, obviously, providing us with several waivers that we're able to utilize during this time. I'll give you an example. Generally, when a person, when a participant has an income change, they report that to us, and we have to verify it in some form or another. And there's a hierarchy that we need to use. And, but during this time when employers are letting people off, and sometimes with very little notice, and employers are closing their doors, and they're not there themselves, it's very hard to get income verified. And the online systems that we use are sometimes three or six months behind. And so one of the waivers is that we're able to accept a self-certification from the participant that they have lost their income. Or even of an, an increase in income, if that happens to be the case. I don't think we've gotten too many of those. But, so rather than breaking the hierarchy that we're supposed to use, we're able to just accept a self-certification, whether it be even over the phone, and we document, you know, who we talked to, when we talked to them, what they told us, and sign off on it. And with the caveat that, you know, if it comes back to us later, and we find out that that wasn't a true statement that they made, or whatever, then we have to take enforcement action against that particular participant. They are allowing us to have late recertifications, just because they understand that, you know, things are having to be done a completely different way right now. And it's different for everybody, it's different for us, it's different for the participant. But we have to depend on the mail service to get the information back and forth, in most cases. So, you know, if a recertification was due on July 1st, and it doesn't get done till August 1st, we're not gonna get penalized for that. Some of the other things, we're in the Section 8 program. The, we're able to apply any increased payment standards to interim recertifications generally. That's only applied at the time of their annual recertification. But if a client gives us an income change, or even a household composition change, and we have to do an interim recertification, which is one between annual recertifications, and the payment standards have increased, then we're able to go ahead and apply that now. Another one is that, in the Section 8 program, when a participant is paying 100% of the rent, and are really not getting any assistance checks anymore, well, the landlord's not getting assistance checks anymore, then the participant stays on program for 180 days. So if something would happen, that they lose their income, or, or whatever might happen, that they still have that safety net, but at 180 days, they automatically fall off of the program. So HUD has given us the authority to go ahead and extend that for however many months we wish, until December 31st of this year. So that way, if somebody is nearing their six months of paying full rent, and are in danger of being laid off due to COVID, or whatever other reason, and they pass their six months, they, they will still have that, that safety net. So various things like that, that are mostly beneficial to the clients. In the public housing program, I know I'm kinda going back and forth here. In the public housing programs, clients, tenants who don't work 20 hours a week, or are not going to school, or not receiving SNAP benefit, or not elderly or disabled, have to perform eight hours of community service every month. And during this time, I mean, first of all, no place is open for them to do their community service. And second of all, it's not safe for them to go do the community service. So that's been waived until March 31st of 2021.
Oh, good.
So, some, I have a nap bothering me. So some other waivers that are more administrative are the, they will not be issuing new PaaS scores, Public Housing Assessment Systems scores, or CMAP scores for the Section 8 program for 2019, unless a housing authority requests it. They are carrying forward the 2018 scores, and then will score again for the year ended in 2020. We're not requesting a rescore, or a score for 2019, because it's not gonna change our, our status at all. And so we're just gonna wait until 2020. The good news about that is... The good news about that is that it gives us an additional year on our recovery plan. I don't think we're going to need it, but it does give us that. They canceled all of the HUD inspections until further notice, the REAC inspections. The submission deadlines for our financial information has all been extended out. Our, our audited financial statements are now not due until March 31st of 2021, I believe, or they're generally due by September 30th of each year. Various extensions such as that, just to kind of relieve the administrative burden for those housing authorities that are working remotely. The, I think it affects the larger ones more than it affects us. But, but, you know, even with regard to the, the audit requirements, I'm so, I'm sure some of the auditors are affected. And our auditor wouldn't have probably been comfortable coming here while we're closed down for COVID to do an audit. So I think ours will still be submitted this year. We spoke with the auditor the other day and he's just doing a lot of his review remotely versus onsite, so.
Yeah, we probably should try to submit things on a kind of a more normal schedule to make sure that the improvements we're making show up soon.
Yeah. So that's kind of the gist of all of this information. They also waived the requirement to have board approval prior. Normally, if we're going to waive or revise a policy, we have to get board approval and do tenant notification prior to implementing the change. They waived both of those requirements for the purpose of these temporary waivers. So we've been operating under most of these since about April the 20th. None of these were required to be implemented with the exception of the HUD implemented ones, like the extension of the audit dates and the not issuing new FAS and CMAP scores. But those that affect the participants are discretionary, but HUD strongly encouraged housing authorities to go ahead and implement them. And we saw that we said not to. It's just, it's going to be beneficial for everybody, so.
All right, any questions? I think you implement them. We, we, we trust Joanne to implement these things as necessary. Like I said, reporting things, I think we should stay on our most normal schedule as possible because we're working so hard to fix some things. Better to have it done early than late. Other than that, that's my only comment. Anybody else?
I know that the REAC inspections always kind of send a shiver down everybody when they come. And because we have been down to one staff member with that, Mr. Stevenson, now that you've hired two more, is it possible we could make some real progress while we aren't being distracted, I guess, by the normal administrative burdens that HUD imposes? So we could, so when we do come back online, or they do, we are spiffed up and ready for them. Is that, I don't know what I'm talking about. I'm just saying that looks like a good window of opportunity.
Yes, it's a good window of opportunity in some areas. Right now, we're not entering tenant units except for emergency work orders. We had started the, we do an annual inspection and we also consider it what we call a pre-REAC inspection so we can kind of look for the, especially the high point items and make sure those are taken care of before REAC comes. And so we had already started that process before this COVID thing kind of broke out in our area. And once, once that kind of started stepping up, then we decided we were not going to enter tenant units except for emergency work orders only. And we kind of amended what was emergency a little bit, but.
Yeah.
So once, once we start going back into tenant units, we will continue with those inspections and be ready for them. I don't think they will, I believe they said they will not come before, well, anytime for the rest of this year. Beginning next year, they'll start making that for those inspections. So we were a little bit relieved because we were so short on maintenance staff and worried about getting all of the, the work done that needed to be done. Sometimes, most, all the time. We don't always know exactly what all needs to be done until we get into those units. We can see on the outside what needs to be done. And that's kind of what's been the maintenance focus, is to work on the outside of the exterior of the unit and look and be correcting things there and to be working on unit turnovers when they're not working on emergency work orders. And then, of course, we have stepped up the, the cleaning schedule in the building. So that's taken a little bit of extra time, but that's, other than the, the extra cleaning, that's kind of been the maintenance focus.
Haven't you also had some units that have been offline because they require some additional maintenance or something, or something's really broken? Is this a time to fix those?
There's, there's none offline now.
Like that? Okay, good. Yeah, all right.
All righty, I'm going to call the question on this one.
Linda?
Yes.
Livy?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
I'll call him.
Yes. Okay, so that's it, right? Is there one more thing?
We were going to look at the goals, I think.
Yeah, do you want to look at the goals or do we want to?
Well, you know what? We can, or I can put it on the agenda next month because next month will be the sixth month mark. We won't be, to the end of the month when we have our meeting, will be the 17th, but.
You want to try to get the third, the second quarter in there by the time we have our meeting?
If you want me to, yeah.
Yeah, why don't you do that? And then if you send that out, at least maybe when you send out the other stuff, so people have a chance to look at it. And then we'll discuss those then.
Sure.
Then we'll have half a year to look at and talk about.
Yep.
Okay. All right, and I think that's it, right? Is that, I'm having trouble with my iPad, getting the pages.
Yeah, that's, that's the last item, Jan.
That's the last item, okay. Um, anybody want to add anything for the good of the order? Then I suggest we close this meeting and everybody go eat dinner.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. We appreciate your presence.
Been a stressful time and thanks, everybody, for hanging in there.
Yeah.
We all, we all look good on Zoom. See the fine line.
Just that face enhancer.
All righty.
Thank you all.
Night, everybody, thank you.
Bye.